Paul, who's in line? If anybody has any such comments, questions? If not, we'll move on to Director of Operations Report. Eric?
Busy summer. Custodial Department's been really, really busy cleaning all the classrooms, shampooing all the carpet. We bought a new piece of equipment. Hopefully you guys noticed all the tile around the building, first floor, second floor. Kind of got all the grout color back to the normal color. New machine came out and doing a great job. We also got the kitchen all done for the ladies, so. Been busy with that. Fire systems for the building, everything's all been tested and ready for the year. Sprinkler system, hydrants and everything. Still waiting for the fire marshal to show up. Supposed to be here before the end of the school let out. He still hasn't been here, which is kind of a concern because usually for preschool to start up, they have to have an updated fire marshal's report and we have to pass. Well, I've been calling down to the state and they have an automated message on there saying that the Board of Education, Department of Education is working with the fire marshals and their backlog. And so as soon as they can get us on the schedule, they'll have the fire marshal up in this area. But I guess Ohio Department of Education is working with them and they're aware of that, so that shouldn't be any issues according to them. So still wait on him to come and do his walkthrough of the building. Also, all the parking lots, all the cracks have been filled by loop asphalt. Playground, we had a warranty item on one climber on the little kids' area. That's been fixed. Still need to touch up the paint on it. The company's going to come in here and do that. Also, the basketball court all needs painted and that's going to be done before school starts. There just, all the rain and they kept backing everyone up, so they come from Indianapolis to do that with a new map all laid out on the basketball court, too. Auxiliary gym floor's been redone. I don't know if you noticed, you might see some tall spots around the area for some grass. When we had all that new concrete put in to whiten the sidewalks, we wanted the grass to kind of grow back up along the sidewalk. So we, right now, everything's strawed and we've been watering it three times a week. More if it rains, but minimum of three times a week we're watering it every morning. So that grass is starting to come in and fill in really nice. Had a custodian retire at the end of last year. And at your next meeting, hopefully, I should have somebody, a candidate, for you guys to approve at the next meeting. We're interviewing on Thursday afternoon. I have five different candidates I'm going to bring in. Also, new scoreboard's been installed at the football field. If you hadn't been through the park and noticed it, it looks really, really nice. I guess they already used it for the seven-on-seven. And still waiting to get scheduled for the football field bleacher repairs for the safety of the bleachers. They said it won't interfere with any type of football games of any sort. They'll be in and out of here, won't even know that they're here, so. Also, talked with, had a meeting with Mr. Pritchman and Mr. McCollum about the leaks in the building, roof leaks, masonry leaks, whatever they may be. We had talked about going ahead with a third party and having a company come in and do a building envelope of the building and pay for it. I think it was John that mentioned maybe contact Antwerp Schools, see what they had done. Really good, talked with them and they actually said that they got so tired after about seven years of dealing with the contractors, when they had issues with their windows installation and heating, air conditioning problems, they contacted the Ohio State Facilities Commissioning Company about those issues and they asked, they came in and did a audit of their building. And the OSFC chipped money in to have all this analysis all done, all the roofs and everything done. And they didn't hire the company that actually did all the installation. They hired a company out of Lansing, Michigan and come in and had them do all the work and everything and they paid for it. And so I spoke with Mike Menahal at the OFCC now. Spoke with him again today and he's supposed to be emailing me. It's going to be one day this week or one day next week. I'm going to meet with him and two other guys from the OFCC and they're going to take a walkthrough of our building. And they're going to look at all the areas that were having stained ceiling tiles. And we've also, in the last year, we've had to replace all three hot water heaters. And all the plumbers that come out to give a price, because to get the warranty, you have to have a licensed plumber and do the installation and start up. And all the plumbers that had come out and looked at it, they all say that they were installed wrong, even though the prints say from the manufacturer that they're installed right. But there's, they say they got to be up off the ground, so those hot water heaters are almost $7,000 apiece. So there's possibility, maybe, we might get some reimbursement from the OFCC, too, and they're going to look into that, so. So hopefully the next meeting I'll have something more of an update, but we're going to hold off on that third party and paying anyone to do the analysis since the OFCC's going to come in and try to help us out with that, so. I talked to Antwerp, Antwerp said that after that company from Lansing, Michigan came in and did their work, they've eliminated all their leaks. And it was all the same issue as dealing with flashing and bricklet and it all through-wall stuff, so it was more masonry stuff, but they hired a different company to actually come in and fix everything, so. They've been really happy with all the work and they didn't have to pay any money out of pocket for any of that, so. We're going to hold off on the third party and wait for this BOFCC to look through things, so. Also, if you walk around the building, I'm pretty busy hanging up picture frames. There's a few of them out around the hallways, but I think that's everything I have. Unless you have any questions?
Any questions, Eric?
Good work on everything, guys.
Just to elaborate a little bit on Eric's comments there about the OFCC, OFCC visit. When I was in Montpelier, we had to deal with the same type of thing and they were very good to work with. We worked with a company, I think, out of Toledo area, Holland. And it was the same issues, it was masonry issues, so. I've been down this process before, so I kind of know how it's going to work from a financial standpoint if we can get it put together with the OFCC, so. If you need anything from me, because I haven't seen Eric for a few days.
Okay.
Just a real quick comment, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I love the picture idea that you had, Keith, and I saw you hanging them. It takes me a while to wander through the halls now because I'm just looking at the pictures. So I'm wondering how the kids are going to get to class on time if their books are not, they're really sharp.
The kids must have heard about it through the grapevine and they come in here to pick up older brother or sister from practice and you see these kids wandering the hall and I'm asking what they're doing. They say, "I heard my pictures up on the wall." So I walked down to the main event hallway where they can only get to it. They're trying to find their picture from the wall, so.
You're going to rotate those once a week.
Oh. There's a lot of measuring, I tell you.
All right, thanks, Eric. Thanks for getting on that roof issue.
Yep.
All right, we'll have principal reports.
All right, middle school, high schools are going to go first this week to kick off the new year. Of course, welcome back everyone to the new Hicksville School District Year here, 2015-16. High school summer sessions that were completed this June and July. We have roughly 22 different students come in, earn credits. You know, it's more of a credit recovery than anything, so they don't fall behind in one of the next school year. Session two, of course, will be July ended. Then we started up the middle school summer session here in August, the first week of August. We have, I think, seven kids here for that and those seven students, of course, are looking for promotion, whether it's from seventh to eighth grade or eighth to ninth grade, but it's going very well. The kids that are here are doing a real nice job. The administrative staff here at the Millstone High School reported back to the official start date, August 3rd, of course. Kobe and I have been in the office every day with that meeting, of course, in and out, but we're happy to be back and again, get back in the swing of things. The ESC on Thursday, we were in Archibald to kick off the new year. It's actually kind of enjoyable because, you know, you get in there, you see all the administrators from four counties. They bring in a real nice motivational speaker and of course, there's a lot of legal updates that we get to hear about. And then, of course, the changes at ODE and of course, the changes coming our way from, you know, state legislators, so. It's a good time to start seeing the period you haven't seen in a few months. Fall sports are well on their way. Good luck to all our student athletes and I highly encourage them to represent our school and community in a positive way, state competitive, but also state classy Hicksville. Students participating in College Credit Plus, this is kind of a reminder for those of you watching on television and if you see people in the community, you know, these students in College Credit Plus, they are college students and it's a lot of responsibility. It's not the old early college, high school where everything's housed here and everything happens here. The universities are sending out letters, example Northwest State, anyone taking classes at Northwest State, those students are told they must pick up their books, okay? And not their parents, not their cousin. They physically have to go to Northwest State to pick up their books. And again, it's going to be a test of responsibility this first semester of College Credit Plus to see how well the students and the families, you know, communicate well with the universities, but also with us, because, you know, it's like a three-headed monster. We're going to really have to stay on top of that and make sure that we're all doing what we can to make it as smooth as possible. The future events, Wednesday, August 19th, will be our seventh grade orientation. And again, it's very important for these seventh graders and their families to attend this event because of that big transition going from sixth grade to seventh grade. And usually it's a lot of fun. Teachers really get to kick out of it typically at 10:00, so we try to make it as fun as possible. Schedule changes will be handled by appointment this year and the goal of this is to avoid long lines in the hallway. Now, we try to do some proactive scheduling in the spring. We met with all students that had any sort of holes in their schedules to get those fixed up. We're hoping that alleviates a lot of the issues in the summer, in August, when we do the scheduling changes. But please call the office, there's 15-minute time slots. The dates for that, I believe, are August 20th, August 21st, and August 24th for current students. We also have new student schedule changes that will occur on August 25th and August 26th. But again, if you can, please call us, because if you show up, we're going to say, okay, we don't have a time slot for an hour, or it could be two hours, or we may have to wait until the next day. Because again, we want, we want this to be an enjoyable experience. We don't want people showing up the same in the hallway for four hours like they have in the past. Laptop pickups, that will occur on August 24th and August 25th from 9:00 to noon in the distance learning lab. Again, if you need more information or if you have a concern with those dates, please call us, we will make arrangements. Middle school, high school open houses will take place on Thursday, August 27th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. And of course, we welcome all the families to come in, meet their teachers, get an idea of where they're going to be at the building, especially our junior high again. And of course, our teachers will officially report back to work on Thursday, August 27th. We'll have two workdays in the building, that Thursday and Friday. And of course, first day of school is Monday, August 31st. Thank you.
Thanks. Do you have any questions, Paul?
I just want to say thanks for handling the scheduling that way, because, you know, I talked to them numerous times about that this spring. It just seemed like every year, it was always starting the year out in a negative, negative way, with parents having to stand on that line. And so I asked them to figure it out, because I didn't want that to happen anymore, because it just seemed negative, a negative way to start the year. So thank you for doing it that way, I really appreciate it. I'm anxious to see how it works out.
I'm sure there'll still be a few bumps in the road, but hopefully that will happen in the past.
At least they won't be two, three hours of waiting.
Exactly.
So thank you.
Anything else for Jeff?
So let Jeff go first, I'm about half my list this morning.
We didn't have a choice, we just took him.
Right. Film reader, free throw. Okay. Right now, as we speak, this week kindergarten boot camp is ongoing. I'd like to thank United Way and their generous donors. They fund that for us, from salaries to lunches and supplies, so. Big thanks each of those donors in the Finney County, of course, United Way, we work with Carrie West, West Side Lot, and she does a nice job taking care of us, so. We had a room full of kiddos this morning getting into the kindergarten room, so it was good to see kids in the building. We are in the office, Mrs. Coffin and I are in the office every day now, so if their parents have questions, if they need to register their kids, anything, any paperwork, we're there every day and we encourage them to stop and call, email or anything. We're here to help. Student handbook and supply lists are on the new school website, so if they're wondering about dress code or supply list, they're on there. We mentioned the open house, I just want to add to that, the preschool, the readiness and the kindergarten teachers and their students will have open house from 6 o'clock to 7:00 on Tuesday, August 25th. It's a little different, we'll bring the younger ones in on a separate night, I think that's a good idea. Just a quick reminder to those that participated in this program, the Market Day program is no more. Market Day was bought out by In Gordon Food Service and that's no longer in place. However, we're looking at, they, Mr. Pritchman got something over the summer, I've been looking into that, or replacing, because that was, that was really popular and we're looking at something that actually could be delivered to their homes instead of them taking up this school, so. More information will come on that when I figure it out. Just one more, a quick one, and all the details aren't in place yet. We've been working on here last week, we're looking at hosting a professional development day here at Hicksville for area teachers and administrators. We're looking at October. We get asked a lot about Hicksville Initiative and all the, we're on Clark Academy and all the, all the things we have going on here. You know, people are interested, our teachers and kids are doing a nice job and people notice that they're interested in, I guess, in the momentum we have going here. And we're, we've been asked a lot and we've spoken to some people and contacted a lot by teachers and principals that are interested. We thought it's hard to go to all these schools or, you know, honor their time, maybe offer them a day where they can come spend a day at Hicksville and maybe watch what we do, answer questions, things like that. If they take a couple of good ideas away, then, you know, their kids are just that much better off for us, so more details will come on there. That's all I've got.
Is that something that replaces something that the ESC already does or it's completely separate?
It's, yes, it would be something that we do. The ESC, I, we thought ESC, I guess I see their role in that is maybe helping us with the registration part, like instead of us getting emails and, you know.
Or name.
Yeah. But us actually being the roots of the ground here that day.
And of course, June, it's Defiance presented.
Right.
And there was probably 30 school districts represented. And when you go there and you show a slideshow and you talk about what you're trying to do here and how your building is set up and the way we work together and how we do our, our assemblies, a lot of it goes over the head or a lot of us almost unbelievable at times.
That's overwhelming, it's just like.
Exactly, so trying to get them here and have us present, you know, on our home turf, giving the opportunity to see, you know, see some of our best educators teach in the classroom, give them, see the opportunity of our building with these pictures and how we greet our kids and the young beat and what we do here, I think, would really be, I mean, be advantageous for us, but also for them, they can see we're really doing this.
So you're going to do it during your regular school day and a teacher will have maybe two other people in the room just observing?
Yeah, for, not all day, but seven months at a time.
Period.
We've got some other things on the side, things to do with the roof, you know, some reputation things.
Okay.
House assembly that day, things like that, so. You know, like I said, I think, I think we'll do it well received, just not, we're not trying to be boastful or hang out, but we're constantly asking about what we're doing here and this is, you know, we hope, great.
Jim?
It helps, allows us to market ourselves, there's good news about that all the way around.
You wouldn't believe what I asked about. What are you doing?
I just got an email from, I can walk down here tonight, from a personal area, so. That's it.
That's great.
Any questions? All right, we'll move on to floor county report.
Yep. Light agenda last month, school starts up over there, August the 20th already. And the 18th, 18th, I said the 20th, I was thinking it was the 18th. And the remodeling of where what used to be the superintendent administration offices will be complete here, should be, our meeting is on the 20th, that's, the board meeting's on the 20th and they were hoping to have that all done, so we can go through that by then, but everything was on schedule and on actual, on a budget for that. And then they didn't have the complete numbers for the lunchroom report for the year yet, but it's considerably better. I think the losses are about 112 from what they was prior to you, John, and you knew the group that John was with and they're trying to get that turned around, and it's getting better all the time, yeah. So things are very positive over there, they're expecting a full enrollment, you know, that they're, just things are, just like here, things are very smooth.
Any questions for Danny? All right, we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Yep, as Jeff and Travis said, we had our kickoff, our administrative retreat last week at the ESC. It was really nice that for the second year, I was able to have the same team going in. So it was our second year of having the same group of administrators and I just want to say how nice it is for me in planning and stuff when we have, when I have a team that I have, because it's made a world of difference in what happens around here, so. Thanks to the four administrators that we have in the district, all the work they do abroad. Diane Zedek, each year she conducts a bus and van in-service right here in the district. I really appreciate her doing this, it takes a lot of planning on her part, but I don't know if any of you have ever been to a bus or in-service training where they put a whole bunch of people together. It's quite entertaining, I will say, and actually I find it a waste of time. So I really appreciate what Diane does, it's geared toward what we do here, it's relevant, we practice and we do things and, you know, it really is a benefit for our district, so I appreciate her doing that. Along with Diane, I asked Diane to look at all of the routes this year and I wanted, each year we have the bus drivers do their own route and the directions they're going to go and so forth and the town stops and. From a sub-bus driver, although I don't drive routes anymore, but I still have my bus driving certificate, it's nice if you would get on a bus and all of the sub-routes are going to be laid out in the same format. So I asked Diane to do all the bus routes this year. She, she looked at the routes that were there, the kids that were there, she drove them, she planned where it would be the best place to turn around and so forth, so she's done it all, she'll be putting together the sub-routes as well, they'll all be formatted the same, so when a sub-bus driver gets on the bus, no matter which one, the format's going to look the same and it's going to be much easier for them to follow that when it's, you know, morning or afternoon.
Did you add more stops? I think you did.
I have not finished yet. Yeah, I got that. So anyhow, she took care of all of that and then when we get to the open houses and she, she will be there, she's actually going to call all the kindergarten parents and take care of that, but there's still always some changes that have to be made. So she's going to make all those changes, she's doing it all. One person doing it is going to look the same and I really like the consistency piece of that. Then, on the stop stuff, yes, there are two stops in particular that Travis and Kirsten and I and the bus drivers never have liked. That's at the old elementary stop, it's huge, and Rock and Smith, it's also huge. And when you have that many kids together, that's when you tend to have more discipline issues. So we, I wanted her to look at that and then this morning, actually her and Travis and Anita and Teresa and Diane, all of us, we rode these routes in town to see what they had planned out and we tweaked them a little bit. So the old elementary stop, which was one stop of about 50 some kids, is split between two different places now. That is no longer there, there's no stop there at all. So that stop will be half of it at, on Spencerville Street by the Mennonite Church. And that will get that quadrant of town. And Chicago Westwood is also part of that, that route. And then the other part of it will be at the corner of Smith and Arthur Street. So it's taken it away from that spot and made them clearly far enough apart that this quadrant is going to come to this stop and this part of town will go to this stop and we'll split it up. Smith and Bryant, thanks.
Give the two a round.
Smith and Bryant, sorry, yeah. Then Rock and Smith, that is split between two places as well. That is going to be at the corner of Rock and Cornelia, so just a block away from Rock and Smith. And then the other half is going to be down Smith Street, heading towards the hospital at 610 East Smith Street. It's by the big gray, what used to be the old hospital years and years ago. Yeah. And there's a big lot there, so it will be filed, be clear for the kids. And then we also have added a stop, so that's the Rock and Smith stop, no longer at Rock and Smith. We also added a stop down at Southern Hills, because all the kids from Southern Hills were walking from there up to Hickson Bryant and there's no sidewalk. So we're stopping at Southern Hills, there's a place that we've designated, and then we'll also stop still at Hickson Bryant, so that'll split that up a little bit, too. Also, when we start the year, there's always a little tweaking that has to be done. We'll be posting this, obviously, around the building when we have open house, but I'll also be putting a notification in the paper of these new stops and approximate times. And we know that, you know, we'll notify the bus drivers and if they drive by the old elementary and there's somebody there, stop and pick them up till we get everybody trained. Yeah, we feel that it's really going to be beneficial splitting that up. It'll load a lot quicker, not hold traffic up as long, and we feel it'll also eliminate a lot of discipline issues, et cetera. Ruth Annes, working with Angie Fries, who is the chamber, what is, chamber director? And on the breakfast that's coming up, so that will be on Thursday, a fair week at 7:30. I sent notifications to all of you today, but of course, you're invited to that as well, and it's really nice that the chamber does that each year for us. And the final thing is for Eric, I thanked him 50,000 times already for hanging up the pictures. I've chased him around the building, I've said no, yes, no, yes. It took me days and days and days to print all these pictures out, first of all. And then for him, he has spent an enormous amount of time hanging them up, so I really do appreciate Eric, I love them, I think they really personalize our building, I can't wait for everybody to see them. And I'll start collecting, I talked to, actually talked to Jeff today about, you know, because we know that probably not every kid is in those pictures, so how are we going to fix that for next year? So we've got a plan on that, too. So we'll be adding some more next year, not as many as we have, and we'll be swapping them out once a year, not every week, so. But he, Eric has screwed them all in, all the frames, and screwed them right to the walls, so that there's no risk of one falling and hitting somebody in the head or anything. They look really nice, I really do appreciate it, so thanks again, Eric, and I'll thank you one more time at the breakfast, I'm sure, so. Thanks. And I think that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions?
As far as our requirement through the state to provide busing, what is the cutoff?
Two miles.
That's what I thought, and that's something to think, we need parents to remember, is if you live within two miles of this building, we are not required by law to bus you here.
We don't have, we will.
But we will, we are, and that's what, you know, we hope they keep patience for this as we're trying to format this and those of us who drive our kids to school know that we don't need any more people driving kids to school than we already do, but.
And you're right, Julie, and, and, you know, along with that, I encourage parents and students, especially that live, you know, within walking distance of some of those that I've mentioned, they could certainly walk this far and I encourage them to do that. You know, our bus drivers are awesome, they do a great job, but honestly, I don't know why anybody would want to get on a bus. They're crowded, they're hot, and, you know, if you didn't have to walk or if you didn't have to ride, I wouldn't ride, I'd walk. So yeah, walk, it's a good thing. We don't do enough of it, so you're absolutely right, but we will pick them up if they are there.
Anything else? All right, we'll move on to page two, the consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone wants to have removed, looked at separately? If not, we've got a change on page three. Kirsten Whelan needs to be removed from the agenda. And with that change, I maintain a motion to approve. Julie, in the second, please. Roll call, please. Far.
Yes.
Maser.
Yes.
Calla.
Yes.
Better.
Yes.
Motion approved for zero. Moving on to minutes and financials, motion, please.
So moved.
Danny, we'll take you for first and Julie, second. And the minutes were attached for the June 29th meeting, any questions on those? Not, we'll move on to treasurer's report.
You have a page of written notes, but I'll kind of just review those. Discussed, I wasn't sure whether I was going to be able to make a bank account tonight, but obviously here. but obviously, here. Just to review a little bit of the end of the fiscal year, as was, as I predicted with the forecast that the board approved in May, we did not deficit spend for fiscal year 2015. There were two significant financial thing, items that weren't in line with what was projected up through the end of the year. It actually allowed us to be a little, about fifty, a little over fifty thousand dollars better than what I had projected in Jan, in May. The one item was we received about a fifty-five thousand dollar Medicaid settlement. The state was required to accommodate the fact that they, we had not received claims from 2005 to 2009, and they had to come up with a formula. Please don't ask me the details because I looked at it one time and it looked worse than the funding formula. But I just trusted the people that we've worked with to put that together. We wound up getting about fifty-five thousand dollars in Medicaid funding for that time period. So, that's a one-time payment. Obviously, well, it's gonna be on the books and it's gonna be off the books. We've had a lot of that as they've reinstituted the Medicaid program over the last two to three years. We've had a lot of one-time payments or double payments in a year. So, keep an eye on that pretty closely. Also, our ESC costs were a little bit, were higher than what we projected. Some of that was, we've got a good number of paraprofessionals, a one-on-one paraprofessional working with students over at the IEC, we got a couple of those over there. We did add one student to that role. Our preschool numbers were actually up in the spring compared to what they were in the first semester when I looked at that, at that figure. To be honest with you, that was a little bit higher cost than what we had seen in mid-year. But those three figures all together wound up being a little bit more of an increase than what we anticipated. So, kind of netted out that, those two combined netted out to that fifty-one thousand dollar increase over what was projected in May. So, I'm pretty comfortable being in that area from a projection standpoint, even at that point in the year, because we do have a lot of that end-of-the-year activity in June. So, all in all, I think another strong year, and I think projections continue to hold true. We try to do a strong job with that. So, are there any questions about the end of the fiscal year piece before I move on to July? Just want to let you know that when you're looking at the estimated pieces that are on page forty and on page forty-one of the financials, those are, those are estimates based off the May forecast. So, there's nothing new with the state funding on that. It isn't amended for anything we saw over the last two months of the year. That will come in October after the, when we're getting ready, when I'm getting the forecast submission prepared. So, it'll be this way for July, August, Septembers, numbers, and then they'll get updated in October when I should have it done in time to change that before we do, maybe, might be done before we have, you have final September financials. But definitely October. So, just so you're aware of that. One of the biggest changes we're gonna see, though, as we update that, is gonna be our state aid funding. It was, they touched on it in the crescent. The projections that were released by the state, and these are projections not done by the Department of Education and not shown to anybody in great detail, they were done by the Legislative Service Committee. That group's sole job is to provide information to legislators as they work through the budget process. We have been, I guess for the sake of a better way of putting it, warned not to consider those numbers ironclad as far as what we're looking at when we actually get the numbers and the funding from ODE in October. ODE was given a grace period to October, to the end of September. Our first payment in October is supposed to be on the new funding pieces. But I managed to put a little bit together. Our funding estimate is over a million dollars higher than it was, than what we collected last year. We will fall off the funding cap that you heard me beat to death a couple of times over the past couple of years. We will actually be getting six point six one percent increase in the capped items. Okay? We now have two pieces. We have items that work under the cap and items that don't. And the items that aren't under the cap are a big part of our increase. The capped items are actually held at a seven point five percent increase, and like I said, we were at six point six. So, we are a formula district now. The formula works for us, against us, depending on ADM, enrollment changes, and our valuation, property valuation is the mark off. I will tell you, those are two of the figures that were, the estimates they used were very early in the process. It is not reflective of what our valuation was for this tax year, and the ADM estimates they were using were from like February. So, we, we feel like we, probably not terribly significant changes, but enough that we're gonna pay attention to them, and once we get a model to work with, we'll be spending some time with that. I do expect it to be in that ballpark, though. I do expect our state funding to be over six million dollars. I just, I'm not quite sure what some of the restricted pieces are gonna break out to be. So, it's on my radar. I'm watching for it. Hopefully, I'll get some better tools in early September. I've got a five-year forecast seminar, and we'll be able, at least have maybe a little bit more of a discussion then, but we'll have probably the big, hopefully, the best discussion we can have will take place when we do the forecast in October. Hopefully, by then, the state doesn't, ODE doesn't miss the mark they were given by the legislators. Sometimes they're prone to missing that timeframe, but, but we're gonna monitor it. It's, you know, it's, it's a good thing. I don't expect drastic change, but it's reflective of, they want money to go with students. That's the philosophy of, of the legislature and the governor right now. They want money to follow students, and that's what this does. For any other, anything else it does or does not do, that's what it tries to do. It tries to have money follow kids. So, that touches on that part. I want to talk about one more item. If you looked at, you don't, oh, let's look at page forty-two. This gives the best representation of this. If you look at the revenue part up there, you look at the local income tax. We all know that we let half, we let three-quarters percent fall off the books, but our payment for this last month, or for the second quarter of this year, only went down a little over nineteen percent. Probably even more positive than that are, because I expected some things there. When you're dealing with that second quarter payment, you've got people paying their, making payments with their returns, the start of estimates and things like that. But there's a line we get on our breakdown which talks about employer withholding. And last year, the employer withholding for that quarter at one and a half percent was a little over two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. This year, at three-quarters of a percent, half that rate, we collected a hundred, over a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars from employer withholdings, which means while we took fifty percent of the base rate we were collecting at, the amount of money we collect only dropped by a third, which means more people in Hicksville are working, they're making more wages, and becoming a better, becoming a healthier tax base for us, for that income tax. So, that was, that's something I consider very positive for our community, about any aspect I can think of. So, I wanted to report that because I think that's something that, a trend that I have to, one, I have to monitor closely, and it's another reason, but I think it speaks very positively for. So, that is all I have related to financials.
Do you have any, any property value?
Property valuation?
Or residential?
The, will be two more years before we get a big cycle change, and there will be significant CAUV changes on that. Even if they keep the formula the same, there'll be CAUV changes on that because the yields have dropped. But we also, I heard, I read the other day, there's a class action lawsuit against the state, I think I, that I read, from, is it today or tonight? From one of, from a couple, one or two of the farm organizations against the state regarding CAUV calculations. And I don't, I'll obviously monitor that very closely, but every indication I've been given by officials at Department, Department of Taxation and any other piece of the government down there that's involved with that is that it won't be dealt with until you're either on a revow cycle or a trineum update. And we'll have a trineum update in two, not this year, and not, in two years after this, it's gonna be fifteen, it'll be 2018 before that kicks in. So, but it'll be, so it's not, so, but at the same time, with a class action lawsuit, who knows what we could actually be seeing in regards to that? That could change some timeframes, but, but it definitely seems like Northwest Ohio was pretty consistent with what we saw last, what we, what we're seeing this year, a change in valuation. It's pretty consistent across the board, that significant increase. I'd have to go back and look at the percentages, but I think we all remember, I talked about earlier, March, April timeframe, of how significant of an increase that was. And we'll see the final piece from how that worked for us tax-wise when we get our tax settlement this month. So, that may be an item that I hit on again next month in September after we have the obvious financials to see where we actually wound up with what our tax collections were based on those.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Anything else? We have two donations to list this month, both to the Hicksville High School baseball program, and I believe these are both related to help with the state tournament cost, state tournament costs. It's five hundred dollars for the Ohio State Eagles organization, which is how the money flows out of our local order of Eagles group. They have to run it through to their state organization now. So, we appreciate that, appreciate them taking care of that for us. And five hundred dollars to Hicksville Bank as well. So, we, we basically, I think we've collected, we collected up money through donations to cover all the costs of that, extra costs of that trip regarding hotel rooms, meals, and everything else we needed on that trip. So, we're very appreciative of our community, and it was great that our kids could all experience that without having to worry even about picking up one meal on their own. Really appreciate our community support on that. And last item is the agreement, the depository agreement with Farmers and Burchett State Bank, which runs from July of this year to July 8th of 2020. These come up periodically. They're five-year agreements. We have depository agreements with all three banks in town, and they just come due as long as we can. My plan would always be work with all three banks so we don't go through the messy bidding process, especially since everybody seems to be on a different cycle on this. That's the one thing I've gotta get a better, a little bit better of a thumb on because I've done this and I've done First Federal, but I haven't done Hicksville Bank yet. So, that should be coming up. My guess is it should be coming up relatively soon. I need to, need to find the last agreement, but the banks initiate those with us because we don't go through the formal bidding process because we bank with everybody. That's what that item is.
All right, any questions for Oliver? Roll call, please. Barb?
Yes.
Lazard?
Yes.
McCollum?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Motion approved for O. Motion for Julie, staff. Danny?
Second.
Julie? Recommend to appoint Travis Liptis, designate to make employment recommendations to the Board of Education. Roll call. Barb?
Yes.
Lazard?
Yes.
McCollum?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Motion approved for O. Employment classified staff, motion, please. Julie, staff. Recommend to approve Rebecca Guyer as substitute teacher for the 2015-16 school year. Recommend to approve the following as Title I tutors for the 2015-16 school year. That substitute pay rate for maximum one-hundred-and-seventy-nine days to be funded through federal Title I A grant funds, and that'll be for Brandon Clemmons at Colfield. Recommend to approve Sandy Zuber as intervention tutor for the 2015-16 school year. That substitute pay rate for the maximum one-hundred-and-seventy-nine days to be funded from general fund economically disadvantaged fund, that's pending certification. Recommend to approve the following as kindergarten jumpstart camp teaching assistant instructor from August 10th through 14th at a rate of fifteen dollars per hour. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2015-16 school year. That's for Sandy Brown, District Metro Board Mayor. Recommend to approve, to amend Chelsea Giggan teaching contract to read four years' experience with master's degree for 2015-16 school year. Any questions? Roll call. Barb?
Yes.
Lazard?
Yes.
McCollum?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Motion approved for zero. Employment classified staff, motion, please. Staff. And Danny down for a second. Recommend to accept the resignation as a regular bus driver from Rocky, Terraraki for the 2015-16 school year. Recommend to approve Terraraki as a regular bus, regular bus driver on an as-needed basis for the 2015-16 school year, rate of eighteen, thirteen per hour. Recommend to approve Jennifer Nelson as classified substitute for the 2015-16 school year. Recommend to approve John Adams as substitute bus driver for the 2015-16 school year pending certification. Recommend to approve the following as fall sports volunteer for the 2015-16 school year. Jordan Falketter, you say that right? Falketter. Football. Recommend to approve a hundred-dollar stipend to Diane Zedig for leading the van, bus driver and service requirements. Any questions on those? Roll call, please. Barb?
Yes.
Lazard?
Yes.
McCollum?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Motion approved for zero. And motion, please. Julie? Travis Liptis recommends to approve Shelley Weatherhead as a Title I paraprofessional for 2015-16 school year based on federal Title I A grant funds. This is a year-to-year position pending the availability of federal Title I A grant funds. Questions on that? Roll call. Barb?
Yes.
Lazard?
Yes.
McCollum?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Motion approved for zero. Services and agreements, motion, please. Danny?
Second.
Who did that?
I did. Sorry. I doesn't help you much, does it?
Didn't quite show the difference on that one. Recommend to approve a memorandum of understanding by and between Defiance College and Hicksville County Village Schools from July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2016, for the hosting of educational training of practical students. Recommend to approve a services agreement with the Defiance County Board of Developmental Disabilities to provide educational services from August 2015 to June 2016. The district will be assessed twenty-five hundred dollars per student for the excess cost. Recommend to approve an agreement with the Defiance County General Health District to provide school health services to aid in the conduct and coordination of school health services for the 2015-16 school year. Recommend to approve the following athletic department issues for 2015-16 school year. First item is involvement for the OHSAA regular season and tournament events for gymnastics at no cost to the school district. Second is involvement in indoor track events at no cost to school district. Any questions on those items? Roll call. Barb?
Yes.
Lazard?
Yes.
McCollum?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Motion approved for zero. Motion, please.
Second.
Julie? And staff. Thank you. Recommend to approve service agreement with Fayette Local Schools for grab point licenses beginning with 2015-16 school year. Discussion.
What's the refreshment, or what's the grab point?
That's our, our credit recovery program throughout the school year and also our summer school program for the, the high school students. And of course, last year, they reimbursed what we don't use. We received a, actually, it was seventeen hundred. Seventeen hundred, I can't remember.
Yeah, I remember now you said.
It continues to be an as-needed, take-or basis. Great. Any other questions on that? Roll call. Barb?
Yes.
Lazard?
Yes.
McCollum?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Motion approved for zero. Other business, motion, please. Julie? Staff. And I won't read that whole resolution. It's a resolution of intent not to provide career technical education in grades seven and eight. Any questions on that? Roll call. Barb?
Yes.
Lazard?
Yes.
McCollum?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Motion approved for zero. Motion, please. Danny?
Second.
Julie?
Second.
Julie. And I will not read this. Resolution for adopting a climate of the day alternative makeup plan, there's really no changes there. We're just continuing with what we've been doing. Any questions or comments on that? Roll call.
Barb.
Yes.
Mazur.
Yes.
McCullough.
Yes.
Better.
Yes.
Motion approved for zero. Motion, please.
I'll move.
Steph. Julie. We need a delegate for the business meeting. Ohio School Board Association, we've got one board member going that we know for sure and that would probably be our best delegate. So up today.
Julie or Craig.
As delegate.
If we're down or we don't have, I mean, we have to have a session to go, and I need to go.
So, which is an alternate.
Yeah.
And that way if we have to do something, we've got it. Julie is an alternate.
We got a GM too, it'd be after the election, right? Yes, after the elections or something.
It's after. So we get, and we'll know, Craig will know, Craig will know if we have an issue. Craig will know before that. Craig was pretty, pretty clear about being able to get that time filled out, so I don't, I don't anticipate an issue, but we'll double check.
So you're being alternate. Roll call.
Barb.
Yes.
Mazur.
Yes.
McCullough.
Yes.
Better.
Yes.
Motion approved for zero. All right, under discussion, we're going to need a meeting on August 31st, 7:00 AM for the employment of personnel. We need three people here, and I guess we'll, just as we get up to that, if there's somebody that can't make it, let us know.
August 31st.
August 31st, 7:00 AM, and I would say 15 minutes tops. Pardon me?
Craig on seconds.
Time to go.
He's going back to first once we've discussed.
Yes, I have. You'll be at school, so you won't be here.
Um, well, if it only takes a few minutes, I should be here.
Okay. 7:00 AM board meeting, figure 15 minutes.
And that, and one of those topics will be, will be the rehire of Paul Overmeyer. That's going to be one of the items. We have a couple other personnel items pending, so.
Consider if we can get him to. I have an X squared label, you know, something, they can take 10 minutes. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I'll be in the upstairs board conference room. Okay, Capitol Conference, we've touched upon that. Craig will be going, maybe Julie. And if we do decide to go, I'm only going one day, so.
Okay.
But I'll on Sunday, come back Monday day.
Okay.
All right, last item is, make sure you bring your calendars, kind of check to see what things they're going to look like for you in November. The board meeting date is during Capitol Conference, so we'll reschedule that.
Good.
You know, maybe the week following, you should have the schedules, but just try to remember bring your calendars, and we'll try to remind you guys in the email or with the board packets to have the calendars. All right, anybody out there want to address the board tonight, any issues? Okay, there is no leave for executive session tonight, so at this point, I entertain your adjournments. Julie.
I'll second.
Steph.
Motion assistant.
Our next board meeting, as we said, will actually be on August 31st at 7:00 AM upstairs in the board conference room, and that will be to address personnel hiring items. Roll call, please.
Barb.
Yes.
Mazur.
Yes.
McCullough.
Yes.
Better.
Yes.
First floor zero. Thank you, guys. Very good.